Sit your pocket, did I? All rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for our country and for the world. Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Is there any comment this morning on the agenda or non-agenda items?
Motion to close comments.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Herschel to close public comment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item two.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel to approve the minutes of the September thirteenth, 2023 Commissioners Meeting with a revision to item number thirty-one to advertise forbid a 2015 Chevrolet Equinox, not a 2019. Seconded by Commissioner Hall, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Motion to recess Commissioners' open salary board.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to recess the Commissioners' meeting open salary board, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Meeting will go at nine o'clock. Any comment, public comment on agenda items?
Motion to close public comment.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Herschel to close public comment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve number two.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes of the September thirteenth, 2023 Salary Board Meeting. Seconded by Commissioner Hall, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve item three.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve amending the miscellaneous compensation schedule for the election training pay of fifty dollars flat fee per poll worker effective September twenty-seventh, 2023. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve item four.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel to create the full-time, non-union position of First Deputy Pathonetary Clerk of Courts Office Manager Grade Six with a salary of forty thousand, two hundred dollars and twenty-five cents effective September twenty-seventh of this year with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the county policy manual, per the recommendation of Jan Kropinski, Pathonetary Clerk of Courts. Seconded by Commissioner Hall, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve item five.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to eliminate the full-time, non-union position of First Deputy Pathonetary Clerk of Courts effective September twenty-eighth, 2023, per the recommendation of Jan Kropinski, Pathonetary Clerk of Courts. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve six.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel to change one existing full-time Deputy Sheriff position to a part-time, union-eligible position, a Deputy Sheriff at seventeen forty per hour, no more than twenty-nine hours per week, effective September twenty-seventh of this year with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to court-related bargaining agreement and the county policy manual, per the recommendation of Sheriff Lance Benedict. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Before I close the meeting, make sure that the record shows that the President was also the Pathonetary Jan Kropinski up on top. And without him, make a motion to close and return back to the Commissioners.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to close the salary board at nine oh three, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Go back to... Yep, motion to approve item number four on the Commissioners' agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel to pay the bills for the month, seconded by Commissioner Hall. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve seminar requests.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Herschel to approve the following seminar requests. As you can see, there's a few. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Motion to approve item number six.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel to approve entering into a purchase-of-service agreement with GPI Scranton, PA for operating and maintenance inspections in Hartford, Brooklyn, Springville townships, including revisions to emergency action plans and reports to the state at a total cost of nine thousand, five hundred dollars, effective September twenty-seventh of this year until work is completed. Seconded by Commissioner Hall, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Motion to approve seven.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve entering into a maintenance agreement with Johnson Controls of Wilkes-Barre, PA for service on the HVAC units effective January one, 2024 through December thirty-first, 2024, at a total cost of twelve thousand, eight hundred, eighty-five dollars, including software subscription, per the recommendation of James Hawley, Director of Public Facilities. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve eight.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel to approve entering into a memorandum of understanding with the Montrose Area School District to provide the SRO for the 2023-2024 school year at a total cost of forty-six thousand, four hundred, thirty-five dollars and twenty-two cents per SRO. Seconded by Commissioner Hall, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve nine.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to enter into a renewal contract with Thompson Reuters of St. Paul, Minnesota for the Law Library Access effective January first, 2024 through December thirty-first of 2028 at a total cost of one thousand, one hundred, four dollars, sixty-one cents per month with a four percent increase annually for the term, per the recommendation of President Judge Lay. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve ten.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel to pay back tax revenue to the Pratt Memorial Library Association in the amount of thirty-one thousand, one hundred, twenty-four dollars. Taxes collected from 2012 to 2022 were sent to the Susquehanna County Historical Society and Free Library Association in error, and the association did not pay Pratt Memorial as indicated in the agreement. Seconded by Commissioner Hall, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve eleven.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the Marsalis Legacy Fund mini-grant applications to the following organizations: Rail Trail Council of NEPA, Inc. is awarded ten thousand; Susquehanna Blossoms is two thousand, four hundred, forty-four dollars; and the Blue Ridge Recreation, Inc. is ten thousand dollars. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve item number twelve.
I'll second that.
Motion, I'm sorry. Motion by Commissioner Herschel to approve amending the miscellaneous compensation schedule for the election training pay to fifty dollars flat fee per poll worker, effective September twenty-seventh, 2027. Seconded by Commissioner Hall, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the purchase of a multifunctional printer from Top Business Solutions of Scranton for four thousand, seven hundred, fifty-six dollars and seventy-five cents, plus the maintenance agreement. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve fourteen.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel to approve entering into a purchase-of-service agreement between Susquehanna County Children and Youth Services and Concerned Professional Services for Children, Youth, and Families in Fleetwood, Pennsylvania, for services as outlined in Schedule F, which is attached, effective July first of this year through June thirtieth, 2024, per the recommendation of Michelle Graziano, Director of Children and Youth. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Uh, motion to approve fifteen.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to acknowledge the transfer of Melinda Carlton from the position of First Deputy Pathonetary Clerk of Courts to the open, full-time, non-union position of First Deputy Pathonetary Clerk of Courts Office Manager, forty thousand, two hundred dollars and twenty-five cents per year, effective September twenty-eighth of this year with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the county policy manual, per the recommendation of Jan Kropinski, Pathonetary Clerk of Courts. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve sixteen.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel to ratify and approve the termination of Jeffrey Crane from the position of nine-eleven coordinator, effective September eighth, 2023, per Ryan Tater, Director of Public Safety, GIS and Systems Database Analyst. Seconded by Commissioner Hall, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve seventeen.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the termination of Jasmine Hazy from the position of part-time corrections officer, effective September eighteenth, 2023, per Warden Vincent Chiramonte. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve eighteen.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel, seconded by Commissioner Hall, to ratify and approve the transfer of Nail Polovic from the position of part-time corrections officer to the open, union-eligible position of full-time corrections officer. No change in pay, effective September eighteenth of this year with a six-month probation period and benefits according to the jail bargaining agreement and the county policy manual, per the recommendation of Warden Vincent Chiramonte. Seconded by Commissioner Hall, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve nineteen.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the termination of Ashley Corbin from the position of corrections officer, effective September nineteenth, 2023, per Warden Vincent Chiramonte. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve twenty.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel to ratify and approve the termination of Sasha Ramesh from the position of nine-eleven telecommunicator, effective September twenty-first, 2023, per Ryan Tater, Director of Public Safety, GIS and Systems Database Analyst. Seconded by Commissioner Hall, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the transfer of Carl Hummel from the position of part-time corrections officer to the open, union-eligible position of full-time corrections officer, no change in pay, effective September twenty-third of this year with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the jail bargaining agreement, per the recommendation of Warden Vincent Chiramonte. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve of twenty-two.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel to ratify and approve the transfer of Jacob Lucas from the position of part-time corrections officer to the open, union-eligible position of full-time corrections officer, no change in pay, effective September twenty-third of this year with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to jail bargaining agreement, per the recommendation of Warden Vincent Chiramonte. Seconded by Commissioner Hall, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve twenty-three.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the transfer of Madison Kenny from the position of part-time corrections officer to the open, union-eligible position of full-time corrections officer. No change in pay, effective September twenty-eighth of this year with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the jail bargaining agreement and the county policy manual, per the recommendation of Warden Vincent Chiramonte. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion to approve item twenty-four.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel to approve the hiring of Noah Smith of Montrose to the open, union-eligible position of part-time corrections officer, sixteen forty-three per hour, effective September twenty-fifth, 2023, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the jail bargaining agreement and the county policy manual, per the recommendation of the Warden Vincent Chiramonte. Seconded by Commissioner Hall, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve twenty-five.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the hiring of Eric P. Lee of Clifford to the open, union-eligible position of part-time corrections officer, sixteen forty-three per hour, effective September twenty-fifth of this year with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to jail bargaining agreement and the county policy manual, per the recommendation of the Warden. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve twenty-six.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel to accept with regret the resignation of Lee Smith from the position of corrections officer, effective October fourth, 2023, per the recommendation of the Warden Vincent Chiramonte. Seconded by Commissioner Hall, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve twenty-seven.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to amend the motion to accept with regret the retirement of Connie Rubio, previously approved on July twenty-seventh, 2023, to be effective December twenty-seventh, 2023, per the recommendation of Warden Vincent Chiramonte. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item number twenty-eight.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel to approve proclamation, 2023-37, proclaiming October, 2023, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Susquehanna County. Seconded by Commissioner Hall, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And do we have anyone that would like to speak to that? Okay.
Um, I'm Sarah from the Women's Resource Center. Uh, thank you for declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Uh, so for our fiscal year 2022 to 2023, we served three hundred survivors, so two hundred and forty-seven adults and fifty-three children and adolescents. We received one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven hotline calls. Um, we will be placing the purple flags on the courthouse screen representing our three hundred survivors. We'll be doing an awareness event for, um, third weekend. Um, we haven't figured out what activity we'll be doing, but there'll be something recognizing, um, our services. Uh, we have our housing programs. Um, they're still doing our legal accompaniment and support for PFAs and custody hearings. Um, we have our education and prevention programs where we go into the schools, and we also go into the correctional facility to provide services, um, to the survivors in the correctional facility. So we thank you for the support you give survivors and just encourage and reach out for help and support. Um, the theme this year is everyone knows someone. So yeah, we all, we all know somebody and we need to have someone reach out or reach out for support. Just give our hotline a call.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we thank you. Would you like to get your proclamation? We thank you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Please let your colleagues know how much we appreciate them.
Yes.
I will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Let us know if you need anything.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion to approve twenty-nine.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Herschel to approve proclamation, 2023-38, proclaiming October one through seven of 2023 as Mental Illness Awareness Week in Susquehanna County. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And we have someone like to speak to that.
Sure. Um, thank you. Get that first or whatever you'd like to do. My name is Mariana Kavitch. I'm with NAMI Northeast Region. NAMI provides support, education, and information to anyone who's been impacted by mental illness. Prior to COVID, we, we talked about one in five people being affected. Post-COVID, we know those numbers are even, are even greater, one in three, one in four possibly. So chances are, all of us, you know, it kind of like with domestic violence, you know, we all either are someone or we know someone who's been impacted by mental illness. And NAMI provides free support, education, and information to those individuals, to family members, to help them understand how to support their loved one in finding their own recovery. Uh, we are a part of, I, I'd like to take this opportunity to invite everybody to, to attend the, uh, we're a part of the Susquehanna County Suicide Prevention Initiative. Uh, as we're ending the month of September, which is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, uh, rolling right into that Mental Illness Awareness Week. Uh, the Susquehanna County Suicide Prevention Initiative is holding an awareness, uh, event in Forest City. Uh, the community park in Forest City.
Kennedy Park.
Kennedy Park. Thank you. And, uh, Friday evening, uh, September twenty-ninth, starting at six.
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty.
Close, it's all right.
You had all your numbers in mind, Doc, and I didn't.
You're doing fine.
We got your back. We got your back.
I'm so sorry. Thank you.
No worries.
Um, in Forest City, and I'd like to invite everybody to participate in that. It's a beautiful event, and it's an opportunity for people to come together and, uh, remember either their loved one who, who died by suicide or, or perhaps celebrate their loved one who, or themselves who was, who were able to, uh, survive that. You know, those, those feelings that, that lead somebody to that, uh, to that decision. So invite folks to that, and NAMI is here as a resource. Uh, we're on Facebook, we're on social media. You can reach us at our office, and we're happy to provide supports, uh, connections, let people know about the resources that are in the community. And I thank the Commissioners for your, your ongoing support of the suicide prevention, uh, efforts in, in the county. It's, uh, it's really heartening to be a part of that, that initiative and to see the good that's being done.
Thank you, Marie. We appreciate the work.
Thank you for the things you do. We really appreciate you.
We have a lot going on in the county, and we're proud of it. We're working for all of it.
As you, as you should be.
Well, it couldn't be done without partners like you guys.
Well.
Thank you very much.
It, it, true, but, but you're, you're, you're helping us to keep that, keep that number float. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming today. So again, that's, uh, Friday night, five-thirty, Kennedy Park in Forest City, and we'll have refreshments, speakers, and a nice walk, and it'll be a beautiful evening, so please come out, everyone, and join us.
It's our fifth walk we've done, I believe. We try to do walks around the county. Very well attended. They are, um, programs that offer hope, like you said, and support. So encourage anybody that's been affected.
And, you know, taking, uh, mental illness and those experiences people have out of the darkness and, and telling folks it's okay to talk about it, right?
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Marie.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number thirty.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel, seconded by Commissioner Hall to award the bids on the following vehicles. We have a 2015 Chevy Equinox with a hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six miles, and that's going to an earnest Augustine. Okay, that's all we need to say on that?
That's five thousand dollars.
Five thousand dollars. This is, okay, total due, okay. And then the second vehicle is a 2016 Ford F-250 Super Duty with sixteen thousand, twenty miles on it, for twenty-one thousand, two hundred dollars, and going to Kisley Hands of Green, City of Greenburg. Where is Greenburg?
In our state.
Yep.
So that's what we have on that. Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And we have a note on here. The bid for the Susquehanna County Roof retrofit project was awarded to Dunmore Roofing and Supply Company, Inc. And when are we starting that project, right, in the next two weeks?
Soon as I get the details.
All right.
Motion to close the Commissioners' meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to close the meeting at nine twenty. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion, meeting's closed. Thanks, everybody, for coming.
For those interested, we are having a Pension Board meeting. That'll be going on now. So we'll take a short second. Anybody who wants to leave, can leave.
Do you want to be a husband? See you later.
Bye.
Have a good day.
Bye, guys.
Thanks for, we'll see you Friday hopefully.
Just like to mention, walking up the sidewalk, there's two places, water's running onto the sidewalk. Not a problem now, but it will be one of the reasons. So when they look at the roof, they could look at that.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, Retirement Board.
Okay. Open the Retirement Board at nine twenty-one. Um, any public comment on the agenda items?
Okay, we'll start with Tom.
Good morning.
This is Tom Wilson from Brinker Capital, and in the back is Bill Lewis.
Okay, I'll stand here so I don't have my, uh, there, all right? Well, thanks for, thanks for having us.
Thanks for coming in.
You know, I, I thought when you guys were, uh, mentioning about people leaving, I was afraid that you guys were gonna jump up and go.
No, we're stuck here. We're stuck here.
We're gonna do it, too.
Well, um, hey, well, by, you know, friendly reminder, so Brinker's been managing the Susquehanna Retirement, uh, account for about ten years now. And when we first took over, the assets in the plan were approximately eleven million dollars. But the problem was, is that the liabilities were greater than eleven million dollars. I think at the time, they were approximately seventeen million dollars, here or take. Over the last decade, we've been able to basically get the assets equal to the liabilities. So today, we have approximately, uh, almost thirty million dollars in assets within the plan, and that place is Susquehanna County is one of the few counties in Pennsylvania that basically the liabilities are about equal to the assets right now. And the reason why we, you know, we care about that, it means that your tax dollars don't have to go to paying down the, the service, the debt service, if you will, of the liabilities. They can be used for other, other items that you were just running through earlier today. So we're really well positioned. Now, the reason why we closed that gap, it's really a combination of, of three things. Uh, one is, when we first took over, we made a, uh, collectively, a decision that we were gonna grow these assets, not to hit triples or home runs, but to hit your, your singles. So let's have some moderate growth and look to compound that wealth over time. And fortunately, the markets have been in our favor, so that's worked out well. That's one. Two, is quite frankly, the Commissioners up here themselves have made a concerted effort to, uh, add funds where possible to the assets, so that we can grow those, compound those assets over time, and grow them more quickly than the liabilities. So that has helped. So, you know, thank you for that concerted, you know, effort. And then three, quite frankly, we've made some good asset allocation decisions, you know, along the way. So as we look at page seven in the, in the booklet, uh, in the left-hand side, under since inception, and again, it's on page seven in the booklet, uh, left-hand side, since inception. You see that we started with about, uh, ten point eight billion. Uh, we've, uh, had a change in market value of approximately thirteen point seven million dollars. So, uh, that's good news for the good guys, as it were, and as noted, we're just a little bit over, uh, twenty-nine million dollars today. And these figures are as of, as of six thirty. So that's a little bit of the history to kind of fast forward in 2023, much different position than 2022. Twenty-two, quite frankly, between what stocks and bonds did collectively in the market, the worst year since we've had since something like nineteen thirty-one. It was really, really bad. Uh, the average stock was down nineteen percent, the average bond was down thirteen percent. The pension plan, though, while suffering, you know, was down, just like the markets, preserved much better. Uh, net of all, cost down thirteen point nine percent. You would have thought, based on the allocation, that it should have been down closer to like seventeen or eighteen percent. And the reason that we weren't is, again, that steady Eddie wins the race. We're not trying to hit no home runs, and when the markets are down, we're, we're trying to preserve principal. The reason why we care about that is that every month, funds are taken from the pension to pay to pensioners. And what you don't want to have is have your plan be down twenty, thirty percent, and then have to take money out of that on top of that. That just makes a, a bad situation worse. So we were very fortunate. Fast forward to 2023, as of six thirty, the average US stock is actually up about six point two percent. The plan assets are up a little over seven percent. Uh, the reason why it's doing better is, one, we don't have it all just in, in, in US stocks. We have exposure to international stocks as well. They were up on average about nine percent. Uh, and then fixed income, actually, for the first, uh, six months of the year, was up about two percent. So being up around seven-ish percent, feeling very good about that. As you may be aware, what's been driving the market, five, US market, basically five stocks, Nvidia, Amazon, Google, and we do have exposure, not a lot, a appropriate amount of exposure for a retirement plan that's looking to have moderate growth, not aggressive growth per se. So that's helped our overall asset allocation. And then really, my kind of last prepared remark, and happy to answer any questions, is on page eight. Uh, page eight shows you the asset allocation relative to the investment policy statement. So this is your proof, so to speak, that we're managing the portfolio within the lines of the IP statement. So as your eyes sort of goes through that, you see as far as our domestic equities, we say that we could be between twenty and forty-five percent. Our long-term target's thirty. We actually had thirty-seven. That's good news, because the markets have been up quite a bit, so we've been strategically overweight our long-term target. When you get to international, we could be between twenty and thirty percent. Long-term target is twenty. We're at fifteen. Now, we've historically been underweight, uh, international equities since we've been engaged, and that actually has worked out pretty well. On average, US stocks have been up about two and a half times international stocks since we've been together. Now, we're getting warm enough to international equities, so over time, you'll expect us to see us increase there, but historically, that's worked out, uh, pretty well for us. On the fixed income side, we're allowed to be between twenty and forty-five percent, and you see we're basically twenty-three point six. Let's call it twenty-four percent. Uh, with interest rates being higher, we're now able to earn a little bit more income in fixed income. So that's another area where you can expect us to start seeing us increase our, our asset allocation, to try to take advantage of those higher rates. And then lastly, we call it diversifying. It's a mix of several different asset classes. God bless you. And we, we know that we have a long-term target of, of twenty percent there. We're a little bit over that right now, at twenty-one percent. We'll probably see that actually coming down as we move more assets into international or into the fixed income side of the ledger. But the, the big takeaway here is that, as you can see, we're not doing anything drastically different from our long-term targets, and we're well within our, our ranges as well, so managing as you would, you would expect. So that really concludes my, my remarks. Uh, I didn't know if there's any particular questions or, or thoughts you wanted me to address.
Thank you for coming today.
Thank you for coming, for the presentation. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Our, our pleasure.
It's a pleasure. Welcome with me.
And just keep, keep it going the right way.
Yeah. That's all we ask.
I know. Bill's saying, no problem. He's on top of it, so.
I said Tom's on top.
So again, thank you very much both here for handling our accounts and, and keeping us posted as to what's going on. With that, uh, I'll make a motion to close public comment.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Herschel to close public comment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.